Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order, being that it's after 7 o'clock on Thursday, October 22. This is a remote meeting. And in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter 30, section 20 relating to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency. The October 22, 2020 public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. Just for a roll call of attendance for the record, for minute keeping, I have board members Barbara Mankowski. Peter Conroy. Michelle McHeckern. And Jack Lynch is joining us by phone. Myself, present. Kathy Murray, the clerk, is present. And then for our first hearing, I see attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy and Paul Turner from Ledgewood Estates, present. So that brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is Ledgewood Estates. We're going to discuss the release of security. I believe everybody got a lot of paperwork through email today regarding the middle signed off by Jeremy Peck, who was our highway superintendent. There were also some outback engineering reports on pavement toward the end of the project. I guess at this point, Paul, would you like to speak to anything?
I'm not quite sure. So if you have any questions or everything was submitted today?
Yeah, the only thing I'm not sure if the entire board received was the binder report that you sent later in the day. I think me and Kathy might have got it.
Okay, yeah.
But that's fine. We do have it for the record.
Okay.
Do any of the board members have any questions about the information that they received
This is very technical, you know. A lot of this stuff is just, I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. Peter?
No, I'm good, Mark. I read the reports as quick as I could, just getting them today. But I mean, I know the road, it's very well built. It's, I know Paul does excellent work. So I have no problem pressing forward with everything that we've collected and, you know, with our, with our whole back that's in agreement with everybody. So.
All right. And Michelle, do you have anything to add?
Like Barbara said, it is very technical, but it does look like there was a lot of attention to detail. And he did keep track of everything that has gone into the roadway and the drainage and all of that. So I mean, as far as I can see, it looks like he's got a lot altogether so far.
And yourself, Jack?
No, I mean, yeah, I read all of the material and it's, I mean, I have no expertise in that at all. So I have to rely on the experts. So it looks fine to me.
Okay. So where I'm at with this is I've requested that Kathy send that information to town council for a quick review, just to make sure because Jeremy Peck left before the top coat went down. And we do have the, forgive me for misstating the name of it, the report from outback engineering. They were present that day. We have an ASBILT. And so I just wanted to make sure that everything we have satisfies the town's needs to release the surety. And just hold back the $15 per foot. I believe that's based on 852 feet, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
And everything does look in order to me. I just, my only concern and question is if council says one thing might be lacking. And I guess I'm having a conversation with you right now, Paul, that if council comes back with something like that, I think you and I spoke earlier this week, and if they say, we would like a final review by another engineer because outback was your engineer and they just may say for the town's protection. At that point, we would request a peer review just of that paperwork and maybe they would verify the ASBILT. I don't know what would be required, but that would be the only outstanding thing that I can see. So my recommendation to the board would be to vote to release the security pending the response from town council. And that, at that point, we will still hold about $12,000 until town meeting, when the road would be voted on to be accepted by the town. And in the interim, we would converse with Paul if we needed to get peer review funds to cover that final cost, if there even was one.
Yeah, not a problem.
So that's my recommendation to the board. Would anyone like to make a motion to that? Or?
Make a motion to that effect. I like that. I think that makes perfect sense.
And I'll second it, Barbara.
Okay, so we have a motion to release the surety and reduce that fee to the $15 per foot. And hold that amount until town meeting pending response from town council. And at that point, we will, that's when we'll actually release the surety through the treasurer and we'll get back in touch with you if there's anything else that they have requested, Paul.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. And I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't kind of catch you.
That's okay. I'm good. No, no, we're good. Well, thank you for entertaining on request. And, you know, we'll work with council if you guys need any additional information.
Okay. All right. So I think you're good.
All right.
We're going to proceed with that. And like I say, as soon as we get a response from council, either me or Kathy will forward it to you, Paul.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Good night.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks. felt like that was sort of anticlimactic, considering we got 500 documents today to review.
Actually, Mark, in Paul's, now that he's gone, I shouldn't, I should have said it when he was here. But in the roads that we've, he has so much done now compared to roads that literally ASBILTS were done two weeks before town meeting. Now it's just gonna, he doesn't have anything left to do. You know what I mean?
Yeah. That being said, I think that we should also check with council to see if we can kind of waive tonight, the release of the surety being the clock starting and maybe see if we could go May when the binder went down at the time of that, I'm sorry, not the binder, the top coat went down in May is when the clock could start, if that's something that we have the ability to do. In order to get him on.
That's how he's always done it. Yes. Because then it'd be perfect right before the town meeting, you know, and not prolonging another six months or even a year, depending on the year, you know?
Correct. So I think that's something we should look into. Kathy, could you make a note of that for maybe asking council in the response that they give us to see if that we have the right to waive that two years if we could start it from the time that the top coat was applied, which should be in that outback engineering report? So that's it for Ledgewood Estates. Next on the agenda, item number three is master plan implementation revisit fee schedule. Am I actually going to refer a little bit to Michelle? Because I know, Michelle, you had sent us some stuff from Plymouth and two other towns with their fee schedules. And I was looking at a lot of the stuff today, so I didn't get a chance to review those. So if you could kind of give us a rundown maybe on that?
Um, I looked at Plymouth, Easton, and Stowe. And I looked at a few others, but those seem to be the best. And even the town of Easton actually had something along the lines of a tiered structure that we kind of talked about at our last meeting. And theirs is based off of, for site plan review, up to 10,000 square foot building, $1,500. 10,000 to 24 square foot building, $2,500. 25 to just under 100,000 square footage, 4,000. So it's tiered based on the building square footage. So I don't know if that's something that maybe we could consider adhering to the size of a.
That's for site plan review though, huh?
Site plan review.
I, I, I like it, but it's, I guess it seems weird that you're gauging the building on the review of the outside of the building. But I guess maybe some of that, the magnitude of the building would probably help to correlate with what gets done around it.
True. Or we could even, you know, maybe the lot size, I don't know, because we don't have to copy it. But I did think it was interesting that they do have it based off a square footage. Another thing I noted, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so based on disturbance, the amount of
Yeah.
The lot coverage disturbance that they do, which would cover the building's footprint as well as parking, loading, and other, you know, utilities and easements and things like that, which kind of plays right into the density bonus thing rather than just the size of the structure.
I did kind of talk to Nate about this. And he said that, you know, we would want to be careful. And make sure that our fees are within, you know, a reasonable range, I guess. So anything that we do, I think we should definitely have reviewed by town council.
I looked at a couple of towns as well. And the thing is, is I think every place that I looked was substantially higher than our fees. So one way or the other, whether it's an A&R report or a Form C, I think we have a lot of room for improvement here. I don't think there's anything wrong with charging what is apparently market rate. And we should be prepared because I think Lakeville is going to see quite a bit more building in the very near future than we've seen so far.
I agree with that.
Lexington is charging for an A&R, $1,000 plus $500 if it's a new lot. That's for an A&R. We're charging $100.
That's Lexington, too.
It is. Interestingly enough, I think if you look at their demographic profile, they've got a lot of similarities with Lakeville. And I think that's one of the things that's been challenging for our community is that we've, we had so many very large homes built here in a very short period of time. There was that growth curve, right? But I don't, if someone's building a house in Lakeville these days, I think $100 fee is just way too low. It's just, I mean, you spend $100 feeding two people to go to dinner, you know, without having cocktails many times. So, you know, I just feel like we should have a more substantial fee just to cover our costs between what Kathy's spending and Nate and all things that go into these, into this process. I feel like it's a, it's a really big decision. And maybe what we should do is work on having, you know, I see like a grid showing, you know, what, what different communities are showing across the top, the different types of permits. And on the left, the type of community, you know, the names of the communities, and then putting down sort of what they are so we can do some averaging and see what they, you know, what it looks like. We might be surprised. Might be considerably higher than, than we anticipated. Did you find that, Michelle, when you looked at the different sites, were you surprised that there was?
Definitely higher. Yes.
Definitely higher. Yeah.
Oh, so the other thing I wanted to mention, for Stowe, they have actually worked it in, in regards to the peer review that they tack on additional 10%. So
Okay.
They, so that's something, you know, to possibly consider as well, because there's obviously.
Processing. Yeah.
Yeah.
A 10% administrative fee.
Right. And they have it for other things, not just for that. Anytime additional review, outside consultant is needed. It has it. So something to consider.
They're a very interesting community. They've done some really interesting stuff up there.
And it's still kind of country and farm-like right here.
Yeah, they preserve their assets for sure.
Something I don't see on that planning board fee schedule. And I know it's really not a fee. Can we actually have advertised, for example, the subdivision we just looked at, there's the, the retainer, the town, they just requested to be released. Is there a way that that fee gets generated? You know, is there a calculated metric that we could use for a subdivision to say by the lot or by, I know, talked to Nate about, you know, having enough to cover, or I know we hold building permits back on some lots till they get to a certain point as insurance for the town as well, but.
What I've seen, Mark, is that the subdivision fees are tiered, you know, to Michelle's point. So it's different if you're putting in three units, it'd be different for something like the project that went off a cross street than something like a very large development that's going to have 100 homes, be totally different fee structure. That wasn't answering a question about peer review, but it does speak to the.
Question as much as just how do we calculate a surety? And you're right, and some of this is in here by lot, like a, just our review of a subdivision, a Form C definitive plan, $700 plus $100 per lot fee.
Michelle, Barbara, do we know how, are the other towns doing that? Are they calculating
I'll let Michelle answer that question first.
But that's not the surety. That's just the planning board reviewing the plan. But that is an example because it basically is governed by the number of lots, a base fee plus a cost per lot. Whereas if you put in a, say, a 40 lot subdivision, to your point, Barbara, if the developer goes under halfway through and the town's now kind of left holding the bag to this 20 homeowners and there's 20 vacant lots and the road never got finished. That's what the fee that I'm talking about, that would be some insurance policy that the building permits didn't get released on so many lots and the town was holding a fee of, you know, 10, 10% of something. I think that's something that we should probably talk about or look, see how other towns do that. So when the next subdivision plan comes in, we've been fortunate in the past year that we've only had two, the private way division, subdivisions come in recently, the Pauline's Path and fell away. So they didn't, the town wasn't as, at such a risk as something that was going to be accepted by the town at town meeting, and it wasn't huge. So.
So it sounds to me, Mark, like what you're asking us to do is do a little bit more research on surety, not just the fees associated with.
Yeah. Should be part of our schedule also. I don't mind something being a calculatable cost. I mean, I, I'm not a big fan of somebody saying, I don't like this developer, so we should raise the cost. I think that across the boards, it should be an even and fair cost. And if somebody from Fall River wants to come to Lakeville to put a subdivision in, they should be, look at our planning board fee schedule and understand how that might be generated.
And I do not have a problem with fees being part of our, part of the cost center that run this town. I have no problem. I have no problem.
Not a fee though, a surety.
Well, that's a surety, but the other things we're talking about are a fee. And if, you know, if a town wants to charge $10,000 for a subdivision review, I, I mean, I don't want to discuss the figures per se, but I don't, I don't have a problem with the town charging those costs. There's, there's costs that go into having a new subdivision.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything on this subject?
No. I mean, like I said earlier, I think, you know, if you can see what the other towns are charging, that would be, help us to formulate what, how we go forward.
Yeah. And that's, that's what Michelle did, was she gave us the rundown of a couple of the towns. And in the email, we got, I think, a link to three of those other towns, Plymouth, Stowe, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the other.
Eastern.
Carver. You did Carver, too, I think.
Oh, we had talked about Carver. There were, I looked at a bunch of them, and some of them didn't have anything for site plan review specifically. So I kind of just kept looking at other towns that did have it. So I forget what Carver had, honestly.
So can I make a suggestion, Mark? And I'll volunteer to help with this, but perhaps for the next meeting, we put this stuff down on a, on a, on a grid, like I suggested, with maybe we look at 10 different towns. And one of the things I would suggest we consider is the average home sale price of the homes for the community that we're looking in, because I think that's a pretty good barometer of what new homes are going to be selling for. It's not exact, but it's a way to take the temperature. And then we might be able to get a better comparison. Because Lakeville really shouldn't be compared with towns that have a very different demographic profile.
So yes, I, if anyone wants to work with Barbara on that, I mean, Michelle, you've done some work on this already. I'd love to see something come back to us in, in the packet for next week's meeting, or it's a couple of weeks from now, I'm sorry, not next week. And maybe some suggestions, you know, I'd be happy to, and again, the purpose of this is not to kill development, you know, the purpose of this is just for us to not be so far behind the times with, if everybody else is charging 1,000 and we're charging 100, probably right, not right. But, you know, I don't mind if we're not the highest either. I don't think we should be. And again, I really, I started this and put it on the agenda for, pretty much for the site plan review, not for subdivisions and A&R lots. It's just because we're seeing these, you know, this 405,000, $405,000 square foot building coming in front of us soon. So.
So are you only asking for site plan review and surety bond fees, Mark?
No, no. I guess that would be my priority, though, is the site plan review one.
All right. So.
This exercise, if a lot of things are out of check, and you guys are actually looking at, you know, other towns' fee schedules and websites, I don't think we should ignore the entire sheet if we're doing site plan review. And if you see something that's way out of whack.
Okay. So I'll make a suggestion that I'll, I'll draft up something and send it to Michelle for review. And then if you, maybe what we want to do is circulate it after you review, make sure it's okay circulated with the board, make sure that we're on the right path before we go back and backfill everything in. Does that sound good, Michelle? Because there's a lot of, you know, we don't want to waste time. So.
Barbara, Michelle, if you need some help, let me know. I'll be glad to help.
Cool. Okay. Thanks, Jack.
Yeah. And I will say, I do like the idea of either, on site plan review, if we're going to adjust that, I do like the idea of, to what you found, Michelle, either by square footage of building, or if we did square footage of disturbance, or a combination of both. I do think that the size of a project should govern it. We shouldn't just have two fees. And, you know, so we got a little, a guy building a real estate office, it's basically, you know, a glorified house. He shouldn't be paying the same as $40 million project that's coming into town and put, going to put a lot of burden and stress on the town. So I think this here thing is a good thing. And just, we just need to come up with a way to either buy square footage or buy disturbance or something. And you may find something, a better method on somebody else's website, on a town's website to say, oh, this one had a different way of calculating. But I'm open to all that. So if you guys do that for the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Sound good? Okay.
Barbara, one second. I was just curious, if I look on my own, what's our median home price here in Lakeville? Because it depends on the way you look. You'll see lots of different amounts, you know?
Right. Because it's a moving target, too, right? So I would have to look at a good source for recent numbers. They've jumped so much. It's incredible this year. It's absolutely incredible. So I'll have to give you a source. I'll be happy to circulate that around. I usually like, like, I mean, a lot of the stuff that I'm used to working with, I don't have access to anymore because I don't work for a big company anymore. But you can still get to those, those reliable data sources. I think MLS PIN is going to be pretty good. And I might be able to get that from one of my real estate brokers.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Does anyone else, before we move on, have anything else about the master plan? I'm sorry, we have to revisit the fee schedule. Anyone else good with that? Next item on the agenda is the Development and Opportunities I'm not sure if anybody else has anything on this, but I just wanted to say, at the last meeting, I was wrong. And Michelle had brought up cluster zoning like in the master plan. And I kind of was confusing that with spot zoning, which would be just a couple pieces. And I actually, I talked to Nate about that. And my thoughts that I conveyed to him were if we came up with language to, I don't know, not control, but to, I guess, control is the right word, the location of the Development and Opportunities District, if we put it, say, within one mile or a half mile of any highway ramp or exit ramp of a numbered road, or it has to be on a numbered route. So that it keeps it off secondary roads, you could actually measure, you know, mileage wise to come up with these areas that would be eligible, as long as they, they still have to meet the 25 acre minimum that's in the Development and Opportunities District, but would then be creating clusters around town, that would say be within a half mile or a mile of both exits off of Route 140. There's the one in Berkeley, but some of that Lakeville is within probably a half mile or a mile of that ramp. Then there's the exit on County Road, which there's that big piece of land that's been on and off for sale. I think there's been proposed solar farms and stuff there. It's the piece that runs between 140 and Freetown Street. It's, I think, 300 acres. It's listed right now, I think AAWIL owns it.
Yeah, so much. Yeah.
Yeah, that piece would be eligible. And it would be an easy on off to the highway. So I think that arguably, we'd be doing our due diligence to try and protect the middle of the town. And when I say the middle, it could be the outskirts. It could be, you know, that little back road, dirt roads. I just don't want to see a parcel get developed that has a distribution center. a distribution center going through a community because we didn't do anything about it. So.
Hundred percent with you on that.
I think inside of this conversation, Mark, is also the trans, the transfer of development rights, right? So that's where you have a case where one, one developer says, you know, I have all this land I want to develop. I'm only allowed to develop this density. I'm willing to transfer some of those development rights to this other location. I know Carver's done some of that. Some of it's a little bit controversial. Um, but I think it's helped protect some communities that have this kind of thing going on. It is one, one tool in the toolbox.
Yeah, that certainly could be worth consideration. I, I I don't know, if, if there's a way to put language in there in the Development Opportunities District. That's fine. But again, my goal is to really try to if something gets developed, the, the traffic should be a big, it should, it is a big concern of mine. And I just think that rather than wait until we have to fight a project that we didn't want to go there. I think if we're proactive now, that if we can work some language out to amend an existing bylaw. And you might be right, but that uh, the transfer thing worked, but I really think that we should look into, if anybody wants to, we could just take the zoning map and try to overlay the highways on it and pick some areas and say, these are the areas we're going to focus on where we want the Development Opportunities District to only be located. That's all. You know, there's more than just 140, you know, there's, and we, we could reduce it to a half mile. Once we looked at the map and we saw how far that allowed that development, we might say not a mile, half mile. If you have 495 exits near two parts of the town. Uh, if you're saying all numbered routes, Route 79 is the, the whole way. Do we want to not do that to say near major highways?
Major, not minor.
Yeah. So.
So this sounds like this bylaw revision that we're talking about was something we'd be working towards for the spring meeting, right?
Yeah.
Do you feel that this is an appropriate um, topic for us to engage a consultant, a, a planning, you know, planning professional? To help us look at those maps and do these locations and talk about the language related to bylaw?
Yeah, I think we get something on paper. You know, maybe for the next meeting, if we could take the zoning map and overlay some highways onto it and just put some circles, just some radiuses. Just, and we could all take a look and see what that affects uh, throughout the town. And also look at the bylaw and see if we can come up with a little bit of language, even if it's, you know, I don't expect it to be something that's gonna pass the council sniff test, but at least to try and convey our efforts. So then we could uh, maybe then talk to syruphead or if we get permission to use environmental partners, maybe to help with that.
Now, just a quick question. I don't want to go in a different direction, but the zoning map that we have, is that is that the only zoning map that we have available? It, it, it's very difficult to to see any streets with that?
You can't see a road on it. It's just basically a, a, a crayola picture of the town.
Oh, it's so awful. Do we, we don't have any other options?
You do have an electronic version and the electronic version you can, you can zoom in and then take, take sections of it off from the PDF.
So now my problem, when I zoom in, it's still not showing the street, the street names.
Right. They're probably not on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think the street names are.
So I always have to use enough, like two maps to go back and forth.
Yeah, you're only getting the major streets and, and routes.
I kind of wish that it was a little bit um, more.
Yeah, I feel like I saw an overlay where there was, the zoning map was overlaid. We can ask Nate, he would know. I, I, I feel like there was something that had where we could see the streets was easier.
Cause it would be great in that GIS map if there was, if that could.
Yeah, the zoning map was on there.
You could find something like that for us, Kathy.
Ask, but whenever I've had to look something up, I've had to do the same thing, use two different, like use the GIS and go back and forth and kind of match up the parcels. So I mean, I can inquire, but I, I don't, I think that's it for now.
Well, why don't we work with what we have and we know we can do and do our best to come back to next meeting with something. At, at least so we have a, a sense of the areas we're talking about. Cause we may say, oh, that was a bad idea. Now that I realize X and Y are in there.
Maybe, right.
Um, so let's do that, please.
Kathy, the town doesn't have a map that shows all the streets of the town?
Larger ones. I couldn't tell you offhand if they have all the streets on them. But I know, I think the town clerk has a larger one. Um, and Nate has a larger one.
But it's only, but it's only the zoning map with no street names. It shows the location of the streets, but.
Right. I don't know if the streets are on it or not. I want to say it's probably the same map that we have online, but larger.
Yeah.
I can check.
Yeah, I really feel like I saw something.
All right. So moving on, item five is the 43D committee. Uh, proposed public hearing schedule, submission requirements and revisit peer review items. So at the last 43D, I, I believe I got you guys or through Kathy. Which is items five A and five B in our packet this week. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yep.
So item five A is the proposed schedule for what they're looking to do is because many of these meetings will require joint meetings with, say, the planning board and the Board of Health. Or Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. And the, I think rightly so, the developer has acknowledged that their public hearing will probably take several hours. Uh, when they go through a hearing for one of these portions of their project. So we may not have enough time to do our regular business on our regular night, and we need to join up with another board to do some of these hearings. So they've looked at the town's schedule and Wednesdays were pretty open. So it looks like we're gonna, jointly with other boards, have some Wednesday meetings. We'll still have our regular planning board meetings if we have business. But for the Lakeville Hospital property, we're going to be involved in some Wednesday meetings. So if everybody could look at the schedule, I know it's tough to look out six months or thereabouts, but if you see any of these dates that are really a conflict for you and might be an issue. And you can, you can look also, this is not a written in stone schedule, but that's why we're talking about it tonight is if anybody says, I absolutely can't make the say the Wednesday, January 6th meeting. Let's talk about it and see if they can move it to the, the next week in January, as long as it doesn't conflict. I think the Board of Health is the only board that meets on some Wednesdays. Anybody have any questions about this?
Yep. When would you like us to tell you whether or not we can make, I mean, there's only one of these that I can't make, but for the rest of us. Do you need us to tell you tonight?
Uh, well, next Wednesday. I need to know by next Wednesday.
Okay. I can't make next Wednesday's meeting. I've got a serpent conflict.
You don't need to. I, I'm, I'm going to the 43D meeting. And I have to bring back this answer. For that October 28th pre-filing hearing that's on the schedule. So you don't have to attend. Uh, but I need to go back to that and just say, hey, we talked to the planning board. We're okay with the Wednesdays, but said date, we amend one date and just see. So please, please review this with your schedules. And if you could just email me or Michelle, cause uh, she has been appointed the new permits coordinator for the 43D. Committee. So congratulations, Michelle. Um, so moving on to.
I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a question. On some of these hearings, they are actually on Thursdays that the zoning board is going to have hearings. So I didn't, I just wanted to know if that would be okay, cause you know, if they did want to participate or anything, they couldn't.
The zoning board is not allowed to.
To participate?
They, this specifically no one from the zoning board is on the committee. And the planning board is the special permitting agent. So we actually will be giving.
Right. But I mean, it's just that people are going to be involved there and not able to attend that hearing.
So which ones do you see?
Um, December 17th, January 21st and February 18th. Those are all the third Thursdays.
Would say February 18?
Yes.
Oh, all the ones you wrote, Thursday next to.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to bring that to your attention. Just like I said, it might take some people that want to attend the residence out of the, the loop.
Okay. I'll bring it up at the meeting and see what they say. Thank you for that, Kathy. So again, I mean, that's the kind of input I'm looking for. So if anybody else could check, just to let me know by preferably like next Tuesday. So when I go to the meeting on Thursday, I could ask.
Mark, I can tell you now, and Michelle, I, I'm in for all those dates if, if that makes uh, tracking me down easier. So I'm in.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Yep.
Same with me, Mark. I'm all, I'm all set. I'll be there.
All right. Thank you, Jack. So Barbara, you let me know?
I can make all of them. The only one I can't do is, yeah, I'm fine.
And I think you're going to be good, Michelle. You kind of have to. Okay, so our piece, item five B, which is the permit matrix. This is what Rhino Capital has supplied as a list of boards and a list of the documents that they plan to supply to said boards. Um, so the reason I sent this was they had asked that if any board sees any other submittals or documents that they need included in their section to ask now. So that's something else that I need to go back. To that next Wednesday meeting and we would, at that point, request any other information. Or documents, I should say documents, which I think Michelle, you had already kind of run down this and you had said pretty much they covered everything. Um, that's in our requirements. At the 43D meeting, I think there were a couple of things historical and the Board of Secmen with the earth removal permit were the only things that Nate had brought up. And so again, I think the planning board stuff is pretty thorough, but if anybody else sees something that we would require to be submitted. Uh, I see a hard copy of all submission materials and electronic submission. Hard copies upon request, a locust plan, location of structures within 200 feet of the property lines. Is this existing and proposed buildings showing setbacks from property lines, uh, building elevations? Parking areas, driveways, uh, facilities for pedestrian movement, including parking calculations based on current regulations. Drainage systems, utility and lighting, landscaping. Uh, loading and unloading facilities, provisions for refuse. Existing and projected traffic volumes for the site and effects uh, to load the road network. Existing and proposed contour elevations. Well, or public water drinking supply, uh, location of wetlands. That's going to go through conservation. So that's why there is some overlap that they want to get all this work dealt with joint boards. Location. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. You go ahead.
Uh, any buildings over 35,000 cubic feet uh, should be accompanied with engineered plans drawn by certified architect. Required by the Mass Building Code. All information should pertain to existing and proposed stormwater management and sediment erosion control. So I'm going to stop there. I mean, it's pretty much I've read the whole uh, certified butter's list. Kathy, did we from this point on require, I, I did tell them that we are requiring the applicant to do the butter mailings. We, I believe we voted on that. Is that how the board's been handling uh, public here?
Yes, well, we used to do it, but for a site plan, it's not required. Um, I guess for the special permit part of it is, it is.
Yep. So I told them that they're responsible.
Okay.
Hey, Mark, do you happen to know if these guys did their MIPA filing and have we seen those results yet?
Uh, I don't think so. Michelle, I know we talked about that earlier that I don't, I think that's going to be simultaneous.
That was one of the things that Scott Turner of Environmental Partners had said, um, you know, uh, I don't know if we want to add that to this.
It should be earlier in the game. I mean, because that filing, I think is important for other consultants that are doing some of this work. Uh, I, I mean.
I know they are aware of it and they did mention it.
Oh yeah, they have to be. Right. Okay. So if we have feedback, Mark, on the items that should be on this list, you want us to get them to you by tomorrow, by next week? What's the schedule here?
Again, I need to go to that meeting on next Wednesday.
Okay. So by next Wednesday, by Tuesday.
And just keep in mind, we, we, this is not to request documentation about.
Right.
You know, this is basically, it's the plans that we would normally require. We just need to make sure that they're all there. This is, we're not trying to get out ahead of the public hearing with, I want to see those trees instead of these trees.
Oh, absolutely. But we just want to make sure that the topics that they're covering are things that they will be looking at because we're expecting them to, right?
Yeah.
So for example, I haven't looked through the whole list yet, but one of the um, questions that I would have would be related to treat, fire treatment um, and discharge of that water. I don't know quite how I would handle putting that in someplace here, but that would be something I would want to, right?
Oh, I think that's going to be a, a peer review thing that once we get to documents, that's a question we ask and have environmental partners just.
Okay. So this isn't a list we really should be providing feedback on. This is the developer telling us what they're planning to provide to us. And then we're going to take this list and provide it to our peer review.
And at that point, we go through our peer review list with Scott. We'll have him present at our public hearing to say, Barbara, what are your concerns? Go right down the list, or we can have one list for me to read of anything from the traffic, the entrances and exits, uh, the pound mitigation and whether that's going to be an earth and berm and trees or concrete barriers. So when we're concerned about what's on the plan, that's going to be part of the public. But this is what the plan we require. So again, I, I think it's pretty thorough, but.
Okay.
All right. 43D folder. And moving on, so that's five C. I think we kind of had that. That's going to be, I think, more related to what you were just talking about, Barbara. Peer review items. And I think, was it you, Michelle? You had a pretty extensive list written or typed out. And did anybody see that and want to add to that?
Yes, um. Noise mitigation. And I think the noise mitigation study has to be very very thorough, so I might have some more comments on that. And then my next question would be fire suppression and water runoff along with traffic. I think traffic's on here, though. Stormwater's on here, too, so. But fire suppression, I don't know if that falls under stormwater. I don't think it does. Disposal waste, maybe it's disposal, adequacy of disposal of waste, as long as there was fire management is participating in that, because what we don't want is a building that's got a bunch of chemicals in it having a fire event and then discharging out into our water system.
Very good.
Yeah.
So that's certainly something, and it, once we see the plans, and again, we'll have Scott from Environmental Partners sit in on that meeting, and I think we'll probably, I'll reopen a line of communication once we see that set of plans with him prior to the meeting. So if we had that list assembled, I could get it to him so that he has it when they present the plans to us. Go ahead, Barbara. You're muted. Barbara, you're muted.
Cuz I'm shuffling papers, Mark. I don't, I don't want everybody to hear all my sounds. Okay, so we have the one from Rhino that has the list of documents that they're gonna be providing to us.
Yeah.
And then we have the list that Michelle did for us, which is the draft of items that we would like for peer review.
Yep.
Right? Would, would most everything that's on here on the Rhino Capital list not go through peer review?
What do you mean, not on the Rhino Capital list?
Well, so they have, I mean, obviously not everything on here, but like their sewage disposal designs, that's consistent with something we would wanna have for peer review.
Yeah, but that's, really, that's not under our peer view. That's gonna be Board of Health, I think, which they'll be involved in the sewage one.
I'm just wondering how much we need to cross over the list the developers provided us with the wish list that we're developing. I guess that's where my question is.
Well, the list the developer is providing is not for peer review. That's the set of plans.
Right.
We're looking at that, that list you held up.
Yep.
With the, the blue heading.
Yep.
The, like, under the planning.
Rhino. Yep.
That's the list of, that's the blueprint. They're basically identifying the pages of blueprint that will be provided to the boards.
Okay, and there are topics on here that will go through peer review, just not the whole list, but portions of it, like noise studies on here. Refuge removals on here, drainage calculations on here.
Yeah, so I guess to speak to that, like, like we've always kinda done it, I don't wanna always trust the applicant and their engineer. That's why we have the peer review engineer. So yeah, they're providing something based on what they think for noise mitigation, but then Scott Turner will review exactly that to make sure that it jives with the real world, that they didn't try to snow us.
Okay.
So anything they supply, Scott Turner or Environmental Partners or a subcontractor of Environmental Partners, because if they don't do it in-house, they will get somebody to do it, so everything will come to us through Environmental Partners. They will peer review it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Specifically, if we have major concerns, I think that we should stress, again, that the sound thing.
Yep.
I, I guess, you know, it's good that we're thorough with this list, but I think we also should highlight, if there are five things that are the most important, which I do think sound is something that when we do a special permit and we have to prove in our finding that there was or is no more detrimental cause by the sound with said sound mitigation, that that's accurate, and that's why, you know, that's why Environmental Partners is gonna do their portion of this is to make sure that Rhino Capital told us the right thing, or that he caught it and we made an adjustment. Because we're responsible as the special permitting agents for this whole project to make sure that it's not more detrimental or any more harm to any of that, the community.
Okay, so with this list, what are our action items? What would you like to see us doing? We're gonna add anything that we think is important to include? This peer review list?
Well, as you were talking, Barbara, I did add that noise mitigation.
Okay.
I added the fire system management, wastewater management.
Fire suppression and water runoff, yep.
Well, I think the noise and the traffic, to me, are the two, those are the two biggest things. I, I think that those
Yep.
way eclipse signage. You know, they're, they're gonna be bound to a sign that meets our sound bylaws unless we grant them a special permit for a bigger sign. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about a peer review on a, a sign as much as I am that the traffic impacts caused by them, not just a traffic study of what goes by that building currently, as well as the noise, and if there are other environmental impacts and the flow of traffic coming off their property, and safety, public safety, ADA. So my thing long-term is, the, my concerns with the occupant, we don't know who the occupant is. We're told that it's gonna be warehouse, but.
It could change.
Yes, but it's not a change.
But it could change in five years. We could permit this building, they have a tenant, we think we know it's gonna be XYZ company, and then in three years, that company's out of business and they're leasing it to somebody else.
It could change on day one.
Right, so.
They don't have a tenant, so we're conditioning for something. So that, to me, my major concern is conditioning the project based on what they told us, and to make it come back to site plan review, if that's a mechanism possible. Because using, you know, the, the lawyer terms, if there's a warehouse in there, or they, we condition it for a warehouse, and then a van distribution center goes in there, because that's who wanted to rent it, and we didn't put any conditions in there
That's right.
toward traffic and the vehicles that were on the property and the use, specific use. We just, we just gave away the farm.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, yeah.
Those are the things that concern me is, it's, cuz that's not a change in use.
Right.
By, by law, by definition, that's not a change in use. That's just a change in occupancy, because the Development Opportunities District allows hotels, warehouse, distribution, all sorts of stuff. So anything that's in Development Opportunities District, we have to think that could go there someday, so how do we condition this project to either protect the town, to kick it back to the special permitting agent, or to deny that change based on the conditions we put on what they're telling us the use is gonna be? That's my biggest concern. You know, how many times, and it happens, businesses close, and then it could be struggle. So if, if it was similar, but that much different, that it created a twenty-five-hundred-vehicle traffic count a day from the five-hundred that we're told, I think that we should have some say in that, so we really need to be cautious. That's my biggest concern with working with Environmental Partners, is to condition this project to make sure that if there's a change in occupancy, that it kicks back or something. We gotta catch that.
Yeah, as long as, I, I totally agree with you, Mark. I think it, you know, it's like, I, I don't know, I don't have a good analogy off the top of my head, but I think it's, it's better to make the agreement with the person before you get married. But once, once you're married, you're stuck with it, so if it's well-conditioned, then it doesn't matter who the tenant is, all things life will bring you and change, but we will have built a nice, tight, safe project for the town.
So I, I can, I can give you an example. One property that had a a concerning change that I, I talk about, or my example. There's the thing, if you went up Precinct and Pickens Street, there's a lift and care with Dr. Gagnon's office. When I was a little kid, the developer that put in Highland Park owned that piece of property. And he went around to every person in Old Powder House and Heritage Hill Drive and all those homeowners that abutted that. And he told them, I just wanna put up a building to store my equipment in. And he needed to change the zoning. And they all, because they liked him, cuz he was the developer, they agreed and they signed the petition to change the zoning from residential to business. And it never opened to store his equipment. It was opened as many other things, but never that. So. I mean, that's just one, and we could probably go through town, and just if you look at any business that's changed hands, or, you know, a business that's closed after forty or fifty years, and then the property gets repurposed, so it's that change in occupancy that's not necessarily a change in use, and we won't have a say over this one if we let that slip through. So we gotta be careful, that's all. I don't wanna dwell on it too long. All right, so anybody else have anything, or can I move on to item six?
Mark, should we add on impact to adjacent neighborhoods into this list?
Uh, I may.
Was that kinda tough?
Maybe in so many words, I do, that will be a part of it. Is, do we have anything similar to that on the list already, Michelle?
I do have impact on existing residents pedestrians. Did you want me to add neighborhoods?
Well, we have noise.
I think it's the same thing. I think it's one of the same.
Abutters. Maybe the.
Abutters.
Yeah.
We have noise, traffic, lighting, pedestrian movement, yeah.
All right, so thank you all. I'm gonna move on to agenda item number six, which is meeting minutes for October eighth, twenty-twenty. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
I did not.
I did read the mark, and I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I did, second.
Did you have any changes? Peter, are you a good actor?
No, everything was good.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You did, Jack. Jack's seconding.
Okay, so a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Yeah, I.
And myself. Motion carries unanimously for the October eighth of twenty-twenty Planning Board minutes to be approved as drafted. So I text on the agenda, I have old business. I have nothing. Do we, did we have anything come in in old business, or have anything we wanna follow up on, Kathy?
No.
And so next on the agenda is item eight A. I have a letter from the Selectmen's Office and Tracy, Craig McGee, the executive assistant, all at their October nineteenth, twenty-twenty meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to schedule a special town meeting on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty at six-thirty PM at Aponequod High School. The exact location of the meeting on a school property has not been determined yet, but we will notify you once it has been decided. Please submit any articles for the special town meeting warrant to the Board of Selectmen by Monday, October twenty-sixth. So I don't think that we have anything at this time. We didn't really have anything pending, did we, Peter? I know we keep talking about a few things that we need to.
No, I think everything will have, we'll have some stuff for the spring for sure, but nothing right now, huh?
Yeah, yep.
Does, does anyone know why they, why they, why they're pushing forward with this meeting? Is there something that's come up that they need it for?
Not that I'm aware of, but I don't, I don't know either way.
Oh, gosh, they did mention it at their meeting on Monday. Rich mentioned it. Can't think of, I can't think of it.
You'll remember as soon as we.
Yeah, after the meeting.
Well, if you remember, let us know.
Okay.
So I make an announcement that the next Planning Board meeting is November twelfth of two thousand twenty at seven o'clock, and I'm guessing at this point, it'll still be a remote meeting. And.
Oh, Mark.
Yes.
We did add a B to that agenda item for the, the online workshops.
Oh, yeah, hang on a second, cuz I do have the, another additional information. That's something else. I wanna, not to go backwards, but Kathy included, there was a lot of minutes of meeting and councils on the layout procedure on roadways. Did everybody see that? I think that's, that was very helpful. So make sure everybody kinda hangs on to that, or save it on your desktop for the next time around. Okay. New business, twenty-twenty fall e-workshops. So the Citizen Planner Training has fall e-workshops opening for registration. They're listed below. More will be added as they are opened. Workshops are about two hours long, include electronic handouts covering the subject, workshops credits. It's indicated by Citizen Planner Training. What's that last P? So if anybody wants to register, it looks like they have roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards, which is Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, which I will have the forty-three D meeting. They also have creating master plans, which we actually just did. That's on October twenty-ninth, and then drafting zoning amendments, which might be helpful, which is Wednesday, November fourth. All of the things, I think if we sign up, all those roles and responsibilities of zoning boards, use of design review, fair housing, planning with community support, next chapter of forty-B. Another roles and responsibilities, so there's some different dates if you can't make one of some of these. Adopting and revising rules and regulations of boards might be useful for somebody to take. Bested rights and non-conforming uses and structures, I think that probably would help with the zoning board. Special permits and variances. And I think if we sign up for these, the town will cover the fee. I think that was included in Tracy's thing. So I would recommend, Jack, if you see anything on there, or anybody else, if you wanted to learn about one of these subjects and you can sign up, you have the time to do one of these meetings as scheduled, please do it. It'll just make us a better board.
I was really glad that you shared this, because I've been looking forward to taking a class, and they haven't had any remote workshops available, even up to a couple of weeks ago when I was on their website. I didn't see anything like this, so this was really great. The last time that we had talked about doing this, we all kind of said, maybe we should divide and conquer. So, I mean, I don't know if anybody's interested. I, I really only have time to take one, two at the most. I don't know if we wanna talk about which ones people are gonna do, or want, maybe we talk about that at our next meeting. I can't do all of them. Nobody can do all of them.
So, as I read through those, I felt like. So, as I read through those, I felt like with what we're trying to do with the Development Opportunities District. The most beneficial one would be drafting zoning amendments. Uh, and I, I think if anybody, or everybody has the time for that, I think that would be an important one. I gotta find that other meeting scheduled to see if there's something on that Wednesday, but. And again, even just. Again, Jack, you're, you're looking for a lot of information and some guidance here. I think the roles and responsibilities of the planning and zoning boards, that might be really helpful for you, Jack.
Well, that's, that's what I had planned to do. I had planned to take that one, but you're also saying to someone on roles and responsibility of planning, well. The other one in the, uh.
Yep.
I'll do the first one. I'll do that one, and then if I, if I can do the other one, I'll do that one as well.
See, Mark, they repeat themselves. There are, each one's out several times, uh, different dates and times, so that's good.
I only saw the drafting zoning amendments once.
They have it in, um.
There's another one.
They have it Monday, December seventh as well, much earlier in the day.
It's kinda cut off on that other page, but when it printed out. December seventh as well as, uh, November fourth. Yeah, so they give you a couple of opportunities, which is, I think, helpful. So yeah, again, please do. I'm gonna try and do the zoning amendments one myself.
I'll do the first one. I'll do the first one, the, uh, roles, the roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning board. I'll do that.
Excellent.
I'm gonna do a couple, um, and maybe I'm saying this because I happen to be reading a book about it right now. But I, I would recommend that everybody participate with the fair housing session. Um, whether you're familiar with fair housing or not, um, planning and land use is a, is a big factor. In, um, inequality, so I would encourage people to look at fair housing as well. I think everybody should be thinking about that. That's important. And I'll take, I'm gonna take at least two, two of the other classes at least. I think this is great. I'm so glad. Tracy, thank you if she's watching or. I'm sure she knows how grateful we are, so that's terrific.
All right, did I get everything?
Think so.
I think that's it. So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, um, motion and a second.
I second, I second.
Uh, Jack seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, again. All right, very good. We'll, we'll see you guys on November twelfth for our next meeting. Uh, but again, make sure you get me anything you think for by next Tuesday related to the forty-three D stuff.
Um, before Kathy goes, we, we don't have anything due to sign, right? Do we? Oh, good, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.